All right. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the October ninth, twenty twenty four, regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen. First, I'm Colin Wall. I call this meeting by order. Uh, will everyone please stand and join me in the setting of pledge allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, where nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Before I start public comment, I'll just point out that Sleckman Mahoney is on Zoom tonight, and everyone else is in attendance. Jerry, you can hear us?
Yes, I can hear you.
Thank you. All right, so at this time, I will open the floor to public comment. I'll start in the room. If you would just state your name and address for the record. Is there any public comment in the room? Okay. Is there any public comment on Zoom? I see a hand raised. Uh, Mr. Schweitzer, if you could just state your name and address, please?
Hi, Fred Schweitzer, can you be okay?
Yep.
Yeah, one sixty-five South Stone Street. Uh, real quick, I don't know if other people are joining us on Zoom, but I had an unusually difficult time. The, uh, the, the link that was in the, um, in the agenda, it wasn't live, um, so, and I couldn't copy and paste. So I'm sure that was inadvertent, but I, I just wanted to make you aware.
All right, thank you. Is there any other public comment on Zoom? All right, seeing none, I will move on to item three. It's approval of the minutes from the September fourth, twenty twenty four, regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen.
Does Kathy Harrington make a motion that they be adopted as drafted with one minor typographical error correction, which would be in the header? The date says September ninth, but it should be September four.
A motion has been made. Is there any discussion? All right, hearing none, I'll call the vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Item number four is discussion and approval to reappoint Dove Main as a full member of the Historic District Commission through August thirty first, twenty twenty eight. Um, I did get a, I did have a resident reach out recently to me, um, with concerns about the attendance of members in the Historic District Commission. Uh, so I want to see what your guys' thoughts are here. I did do a little research and did find that some members, uh, aren't always at all the meetings, and I don't know if that's something we want to reach out to them and discuss and see if they can commit fully to this commission, or they would rather step down and see other people that might have an interest in it. And so I want to see what everyone's thoughts are there.
I think, I think it's a reasonable question to raise. I would think the chairman would be the one to speak to and see if it's inhibiting the act, uh, the progress of the, of the commission.
Yeah, I guess it just had a meeting Monday night and they couldn't form a quorum.
Because they didn't have enough.
Didn't have enough people, so that's most recent.
Was that an exception or a rule, more consistent that that happens?
Of course, you're there. What do you see?
I would say that's the first time in a while that we've had not a quorum. It, there's nights when it is relatively low with the numbers.
Seven, five or seven?
Yeah, there's five with two alternates, or wait, no, there's actually three alternates, I believe, on that one.
Yeah, it's three. It's five, five and three.
Yeah.
And so when you kind of look at all the numbers, you know, it's the few high ones that are absent. Most everyone, there's an average number, I would say, for everyone who had, so.
We have another meeting this month, don't we?
We did. So I could reach out to, Ash Dove Main is the chair, so I could reach out to him. I could reach out to members and see what their commitment level is.
Uh, yeah, I would like to table, and I would, that's exactly what I'd like to see if, if they're committed and, you know, not having a quorum is not great. And, and, and missing a lot of meetings, if, if you're not committed, that's okay. I get it, but we need people to, to be there.
This is Kathy Harrington. I also support that. So I think I would make a motion that we table items four, five, and six, which are all, which are the three potential reappointments for the Historic District Commission.
Okay. Uh, the motion has been made. Is there any discussion? All right, hearing none, call the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Item number seven is discussion and approval to appoint a member to the Social Services Commission to fill the remainder of Marshall DeForest's term through November thirtieth, twenty twenty six. You guys received recommendations, Kristen Kling from the DTC and Mark Blackaby from the RTC. And Chairman Zatoni did, um, remove her request for that until a later date. Uh, we do potentially have reappointments coming up, so, uh, we can consider her recommendation at that time. Uh, it's nice to see that there are not many people interested in this commission, and so.
So we, so tonight, we can go down one of the fifth?
Yeah, we have two currently. It's Kristen Kling and Mark Blackaby.
But one vacancy.
But one vacancy at the moment, correct.
I make a motion to appoint Kristen Kling to the Social Services Commission.
All right, the motion has been made. Is there any discussion? I don't know Kristen Kling that well. I've bumped into her, I think, once or twice.
She's got a, a PhD in, uh, psychology. She's done a lot of work, particularly with senior citizens. She runs groups, she teaches classes, uh, at the university. Her work has been, as I said, a lot with, uh, senior women, particularly women who have some difficulty or another. So she's had experience in here. I know, I know Robin's been concerned about someone with children in the schools. Uh, she does not have, she has children, but not in the school.
Is there any further discussion? All right, hearing none, I'll call the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed.
Aye, or against, I should say.
All right, motion fails, two to three. Do you have any other?
So this is Jerry Mahoney. I'll, I'll make a motion in favor of appointing Attorney Mark Blackaby to the Social Services Commission.
All right, the motion has been made. Is there any discussion?
Uh, well, I guess what I would like to say is, uh, both, uh, both of these candidates have, um, qualities that would make them appropriate for the Social Services Commission. Uh, and I think that it says something about Sleckman that you can, you can get information about folks like this. You find out what folks are doing for their community now and in the past. So I, I think that speaks to both of them.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I'd be interested to know more about Mark. Besides what I read. Does anybody know anything else about?
Other than what, I'm sorry, is this Kathy Harrington, other than what he submitted?
Okay.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm asking a question, though. You want to know?
I just know if you knew anything more about it than that.
I know he was our former ECO. I know he's a member of the RTC.
I'm sorry, urgency what?
Uh, the RTC.
He's also on, isn't he on the zoning board of appeals?
He is. Uh, I believe he's the chairman. Um, so I know he's committed himself to town matters before.
In, in his write-up, I think, just in fairness, to put it out there, you know, he has practiced elder law and has been, you know, has had court appointments for attorneys for disabled and elderly parties. He also volunteers, um, with different programs, run out of the VFW for veterans and food banks and things like that.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any further discussion? All right, hearing none, I'll call the vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Aye.
All right, motion carries, four to one. Item number eight is discussion and approval to appoint a member to the Kent Memorial Library Commission to fill the remainder of Michelle Crenard's term through November thirtieth, twenty twenty five. Uh, we have three candidates. It's, uh, Fred Schweitzer from the DTC, uh, and Anne Barachi from the RTC, and Cass McCool, um, who reached out to me to, uh, share her resume with you guys. Uh, I did not get any information from Anne, and we've reached out to her. I think she's on vacation, so I don't have anything to share with you guys at this moment.
So with that, this is Kathy Harrington. I would make a motion that we table item number eight until we have the information from Ms. Barachi, so that we can consider it in fairness with the other candidates.
All right, the motion has been made. Is there any discussion?
Uh, uh, this question is, do you know if her husband's a doctor?
He is.
He is.
That's.
So you're somewhat familiar with family, okay?
Okay.
All right, any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carries, four to one. Item number nine is discussion and approval of tax payment in the amount of nine thousand two hundred and seven dollars and fifty-eight cents to Gregory D. Boyver due to overpayment. And I apologize if I've messed up his last name.
This is Kathy Harrington. I make a motion, um, that we approve the tax payment in the amount of nine thousand two hundred and seven dollars and fifty-eight cents to Gregory D. Boyver due to overpayment. And I also apologize if I mispronounced his last name.
All right, the motion has been made. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Item number ten is discussion and approval to set late fees under chapter one fifty-nine dash five of the building construction ordinance. Uh, so our building official, Mike Addington, is here today. Is Derek, the town attorney Derek Donnelly on the line again? But at our September fourth meeting, we had discussed setting these late fees, and a question of escalating fees arose, and.
No, it's not.
Okay. So, Mike, you're here. We asked you to find out about the escalating fees and what other towns were doing. It seemed like two fifty was the standard fee. So why don't you elaborate on what you spoke with the town attorney?
So when I talked to, spoke with Derek, he said that if it becomes an escalating fee like that, it would need, it would need an appeal board. So it would be something that people would have to be able to appeal.
Which we currently don't have for that specific.
Yeah, he said it becomes a fine and then that.
Yeah.
So, um, this would just be a one-time fee for that, take that seriously. But the thoughts more about it, then, it can be, uh, like a minimum of two fifty or three fifty with, um, doubling the permit fee if the permit fee is higher than that. So it would be a minimum of two fifty or three fifty, or the permit fee, whichever's higher. Just for example, uh, permit fee of three hundred and fifty dollars is a project that's around eighteen thousand dollars. So, oops, um, some air condition replacements, some of the, um, minor renovations, I would call it. So additions, major renovation projects will be over that. So it would be double the fee.
And the two fifty is covering basically your costs, then to what costs are covered?
The marshal to serve in the stop work order, with how it takes investigating. That's, the marshal's around a hundred dollars every time. And that's all stuff that taxpayers in town are paying for because.
Plus your time.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, how much time do you put into that?
It takes a while because I have to draft up the document and send it out. We've called marshals, it says all, make copies. It, it takes a while.
Couple hours.
I recall at the last meeting, you said you had a lot of, I mean, it is in a, like, happens once in a while. It seemed like it happened quite frequently.
I have six since the last meeting.
I'm sorry?
There's six. I wrote down, I started making a list. There's six since the last meeting. That's the only, no, there's others that are out there that I'm not aware of, but I can't.
Are these people just skirting the system, or, I mean, what is it? Uh, it's so frequent.
Is it, is it?
I think they realize that nothing really is going to happen.
Is it, are they, is it contractors or is it homeowners, or is it a mix?
Uh, it's mainly contractors and people that know better.
I'll just point out the town attorney is joining us now. I feel we're just discussing, uh, one fifty-nine dash five.
I guess more of a question for Derek. Can we have a fee for contractors that's different from for homeowners?
No, it has to be the same.
That's the same.
So, and what the, um, obviously, the ordinance allows you to set these fees. Um, and that mirrors the building code. The state building code is the same thing.
So this is Kathy Harrington. So just make sure I understand. Initially, we had said you were looking for us to set at two hundred and fifty, but are you saying now two hundred and fifty or three hundred and fifty?
Well, yeah, yes.
If one were higher.
Whatever, if you wanted it higher, I think that was kind of the idea last meeting, we said it's too low.
Saying like two hundred and fifty or it would be three hundred and fifty if the permit fee, or I'm sorry.
It would be a minimum of three fifty if that's decided, or double the permit fee. If the permit fee's higher than three fifty, because it starts at sixty dollars. That's the minimum permit fee.
Okay.
So there's a good portion that are less than three fifty.
Okay, so you're saying that's the minimum?
Yeah.
Okay. If the permit fee's under that?
Yeah.
And, and the language here, the, uh, state building code is two hundred to a thousand. Okay, for a violation of this, of the state building code, it's between two hundred and a thousand. And this is essentially what the, uh, what we're talking about here. We're talking about violation of the state building code.
Oh, can escalate it? I mean, if second time, we can charge more on the fee.
I, I think you have to set a, the, the ordinance doesn't allow, the ordinance doesn't have that in authorizing language. We could always amend the ordinance to do that, but I think it would have to pay on a, um, you know, one set fee for everyone regardless of the violation.
You said there were six cases since we last met. How many of those were private, uh, homes as opposed to developers?
They were all residences. These weren't commercial buildings, uh, commercial projects.
They were all commercial projects?
They were all residential, you know, homes.
Mr. Addington, I, I believe that what, uh, Sleckman Chavis is getting at is I, I think he was trying to, uh, get information about whether, on those six incidents, whether they are developers or homeowners doing work on their own home. Is that?
I believe they're all, I, I believe they're all contractors. These aren't homeowners doing their own work.
Okay. So somebody hired somebody.
Yes.
To do whatever.
Yeah.
And they should know this stuff, right?
Yeah, it's part of the licenses.
Yeah, okay.
And I would just add, it becomes a real problem for homeowners too later on, because by and large, and, and I've been involved in, in work for private clients and have seen this firsthand. But by and large, if you, you sign a, uh, contract with a, you know, someone to put on a deck in back of your house, right? You don't have any expertise in putting a deck on. You're relying on the contractor, and it's, you know, generally, you say, look, the, you know, this much for fee for building permit fees, and the contractor will, um, handle taking the building permit. And unfortunately, what I've seen in my career is that what people will do is they'll take the building permit fee they collected from the client, and they'll put it in their pocket as additional profit, thinking, okay, it's not a big deal. And what happens, and, and you can talk to Lisa about this. Lisa sees this all the time. You know, they go out to do, um, you know, revaluations, and all of a sudden, there's a deck on the house, there's a shed in back of the house. You know, things that you're not necessarily going to pick up on until you have that revaluation every five years. And, um, you know, it becomes a real problem. The, the other thing I think it's important to, to point out to everyone is that there's been a shift in title insurance and how title insurance is issued in Connecticut. So, if, over the last couple of years, um, most of the major property title insurance uh, carriers are requiring a municipal search to be done, okay? And a municipal search is something that's, that's done, looking for open building permits. Um, it, you know, people are paying a, a much, uh, larger level of attention to, um, work that might have been done and not have permits pulled for. So the building departments are now having to go back and close out a lot of fees, where contractors, contractors have walked away from these things. And it's being driven by what the title insurance is looking to have done, that there are no open permits which, which could create a title issue. And I just think that's, that's sort of an important shift in, uh, what we've seen over the last, you know, year or two. Um, and it's become a strain on the building department, but it's also brought to light a lot of these unpermitted work issues.
So since this is, um, authorized by the ordinance that we can set the amount, we don't need a motion, we're just in consensus of the board?
No, you would do it, you would do it by a motion. And then, once the motion passes, what I would recommend is you do it in such a way that it's, um, you know, to be, you know, to go into effect at a date certain, so that it's posted in the building department, um, which is, which is what earlier in the ordinance requires for the other fees that, that were set previously, so.
Can we leave the effective date up to, or we need to decide the effective date tonight?
I would, I would, in a motion, decide the effective date. Um, my recommendation was, would be to do it, um, you know, so that there's sufficient notice that can be in the building department and posted for, you know, let's say, you know, two, three weeks, thirty days, something along those lines.
So what are you thinking, January one, is that too much time?
Yeah, I think this, I think November fifteenth would be appropriate.
Okay. Give me too much time, okay.
So, Mr. Addington, this is Jerry Mahoney. Uh, in terms of the, the, whether it's two fifty, three fifty, or some other number, did you have the opportunity to confer with, uh, building officials in other towns to see what they're doing?
Oh, yes, yes, they're all around two fifty. A couple other towns do the doubling the permit fee for permits that are larger than, uh, two fifty.
So this is Jerry Mahoney. And, um, I think as we're just seeing this, I'm not comfortable starting out with doubling the, uh, building permit fee. And my counsel to the other members of the board would be to start at the two fifty and see, get some feedback from the building official in the future is how that is working out for us.
I think that's fair.
I think that's fair.
I'm sorry.
I think it's fair.
Yeah, I, I'm just wondering about if, if there should be a different amount for larger projects. There's a question to you. Is it, I'm saying if somebody's doing like a hundred thousand dollar, whatever, that's kind of more complicated, more time consuming than your part. Am I right or wrong? Maybe I'm wrong.
No, it's about the same.
It's about the same, okay.
And I think Jerry's point is well taken, this is Kathy Harrington, that we can see if we adopt this, we can see how it works out, and the building inspector can come back to us and say, I think it's had some effect, but this is what I'm saying, and if we needed to increase it or decrease it, or whatever the case is, we can do that at a time.
Okay, so.
I understand Jerry's point, but, but I'm of the one that they, they had to get a state license. They know that they have to pull a permit, and they're not pulling permits. So, uh, I, I think we should double it. I, I, you know, this, these, I don't, uh, I'm going to say it anyways. I don't think these are honest mistakes. I think they're trying to beat the system. And if you come out with a doubling the, the fine, it'll probably stop very quickly.
I agree.
I agree with Sleckman Hill, but, um, I just think they should be at a thousand right away for the fact they are skirting the system. I don't think they're.
And I'm okay with that, yeah.
So, but I, Jerry, Jerry's point is well taken, so I, I could see us starting there.
Yeah.
And see how it goes. If it doesn't stop, then we consider raising the fees at that point.
Would it be of value to put a date on when we have them come back? Like, what, it's six months or ten months or something like this?
I did bring them back for six months.
Yeah.
Yeah, get some real numbers together and report. Is that fair?
Yeah.
All right, so, why don't we?
Well, we do a motion, uh, what, gentlemen, what, um, start date do you think sounds reasonable, start date?
November fifteenth is a good start date.
That was what council had suggested, that we could make that happen in terms of posting notice on the website and wherever else we need to do it.
And what, what's the motion going to be for the amount?
It would be the two fifty.
Okay.
Welcome back and review and see.
Start November fifteenth.
I've got your motion.
I haven't made it yet. I was just kind of fleshing out. I think that we didn't have to fight over motion if we all kind of have consensus.
I mean, if it happens so frequently, I, is there any reason why we can't start it November first? I mean, that's twenty-one, twenty, maybe like twenty days from now.
Yeah, the ordinance doesn't say a specific amount of time that it has to be posted for. When, um, the former building official, Kimberly Rogers, came in and, and you set fees, um, I think we did thirty days, just so people had an ample amount of time, um, to, to see it. The only requirement in the ordinance is that it be posted in the building department. But to your point, uh, for Sleckman Mall, I, I think it's a good idea to put it on the website, to put it in the town clerk's office, all the things that we've been doing. So, in addition to posting in the building part.
I think for consistency purposes, then, we should still put like a thirty-two.
I think so.
Okay.
I, I don't think you should change that up. So this is Kathy Harrington. I would make a motion that we, um, approve late fees of two hundred and fifty dollars under chapter one fifty-nine dash five for the building construction ordinance to be effective on November fifteenth, twenty twenty-four. And not part of the motion, but kind of implicitly, and have the building inspector come back in six months and give us enough days.
The motion has been made. Is there any discussion on the motion?
I'm, I'm just going to vote against it, because I think it should at least be doubled.
Okay. All right, any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Opposed.
All right, motion carries, four to one. Item number eleven, I think it's my, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number eleven is discussion of town property on fourteen forty Mountain Road. Board had requested further pricing for the inside of the building if we were to keep it for a storage building. So I sent you guys what Director Lee Corbett sent me in regards to installation of drywall, um, for the ceiling, the open area in the back wall, likely additional costs for insulation. As it appears, however, you was, couldn't tell until you take the ceiling off. Uh, so it appears, we're looking at between seven to ten thousand and all in, somewhere around twenty-five to thirty-five thousand dollars to fix the building. I'd like to get something done before the winter. And I know Sleckman Hill had said we should just do some, fix it regardless of what we do. Um, and I don't disagree with that.
Have we definitively know it's a historic building?
I think we.
I mean, I, I, I happen to talk to Lester Smith before, and he didn't think so.
Yeah, we mentioned that it wasn't in the district last time, or any sort of district, and it didn't appear to be in any historic building, but it is an old, is the old virus.
Yeah.
I, I did not find it in any registers of historic buildings. Certainly not an area of expertise of mine, but I, we looked and we didn't, we didn't see anything.
And just my, my thought was, it, it still stands, we should, we should fix it to a point. I, I think you need to fix the hole in the roof and put, put a new roof on. But I think if you take down the, the sheet rock, I don't think you need to put more sheet rock or insulation in, because there's, there's no water in there, right? There's nothing.
Well, it's saying it's kind of musty in there, and it's, it feels pretty good.
But we're not, I, I just don't understand why we're insulating it and putting more sheet rock. Like, there's no need. If it's just going to be storage, just.
If the storage stuff could get moldy.
But if, if you, if you stop the, the water coming in.
Well, because dampness will do that. You don't have to have just water. You can do it from the air, the moisture.
Yeah, well, that's the thing I was saying last week, I felt like it's an old basement, you know, you're in there.
Yeah.
Someone that you need to hit a fire, do you need a fire?
Yeah.
I mean, I'm still of the opinion that we need more storage, and that there's multiple departments that could use the storage, that this money could go towards that. But I also understand there probably needs to be a little more research done and some more facts provided for people in order to get to that point. So I'm, I'm willing to, you know, get the building fixed up and then take a look at it further down the line. But I, I know it's not going to solve our storage issues. It's already full. And we still have more stuff to put in.
Right.
I think we should make the repairs.
Okay.
Yeah.
I know.
So this is Jerry Mahoney. In terms of making it, it, it depends on what we intend to store there. If it's going to be a fully functional storage area, it's going to need heat. But I don't think we're looking to take that on at this point.
Yeah, I think I have to look at exactly what each department wants to store, and that'll give us a better idea of what kind of facility we need.
Does it have electricity? I mean. I mean.
Yeah, I was like, yeah, yeah.
It does.
It does.
I, I, I would rather tear it down and build an adequate storage facility.
I'm in agreeance, but I'm looking for something that we can do now and it sounds like, Jerry, what, what's your stance on this?
I, I think that we're going to have to go ahead and get some repairs done to get this place weather tight.
Okay, so for now, I'm going to go bare bones on it, get the roof fixed.
Yep.
The, what the initial quote was and kind of go from there.
You don't need a motion?
No, I'll just, I can just direct that to the defense at that point.
Okay.
Anyone else have anything to report? Move on.
Nope.
All right. Item number twelve is public comment. Is there any public comment in the room? Ms. Jenick, just your David address for the record, please.
Sandra Jenick, three eighty Cross Street. Just that tonight particularly has been extremely frustrating and difficult to hear you guys. Again, the only person I've heard clearly is, is Mr. Donnelly and Mr. Mahoney on Zoom. Everybody else, I've had very, a great deal of trouble understanding or even hearing the words you're saying. So it would be nice if there was some microphones maybe and the gentleman who spoke, I'm sure he had a lot to say, couldn't hear a thing he said. Just, and I think I was the only one, just logistic issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment in the room?
Yeah.
Ms. Hornish?
Annie Hornish, eight sixty-four Thrall. I just want to thank you, Mel, for promoting Kristen as a choice for the Social Services Commission. Kristen Kling, who I'm sure you know, the first Leckman knows, he's met her before. She's a PhD. She teaches at UConn. She's eminently qualified to be on any commission in this town and we would be lucky to have her. So just please consider qualifications when you pick people. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment in the room? All right, is there any public comment on Zoom? Any public comment on Zoom? All right, staying done, I will move to Sloughman updates. A reminder that we're going to have a joint meeting next Tuesday with the Board of Finance to discuss the emergency services radio project. PBC appears to be wrapping up their work walking through all the buildings for the facilities master plan, so I expect to have a report from them in the next two to three months. We just received a very nice donation from our social services chairman, Robin Zetoni, in the amount of ten thousand dollars for streaming equipment like we have here and at the PD for our community services building. So we will be installing that over the course of the next month or two.
It's very generous.
Actually, the next month. So I want to thank her for her donation.
That's very nice.
Yeah, I think it's going to open up, gives us the ability to stream programs live, you know, bingo, exercise. You know, for the people that can't make it out of their homes, there's an opportunity to join us. And it gives us another location for Zoom meetings as we seem to be running into those issues frequently. Field of flags donations, we're still accepting those. Forms are on the website or you can call my office and speak with Chris Lambert. I want to thank Don Ledoux from Turning Point Wellness, George and Christie Fields from Southfield Hardware, Dave and Kim Shute, the VFW for gathering and sending supplies down for Hurricane Lee relief. They are loading as we speak and I believe they received three trailer loads of goods from residents in the area, including people from outside of town. That's all they were doing this. So thank you to them and thank you to everyone that donated. Just want to say congratulations on the bronze certification for Sustainable Connecticut. We received just this past week, Sustainable Southfield, the task force and our WPCA superintendent Jamie Crowler did all the legwork for that. We kind of re-looked at what we did from last time and focused on what was more beneficial to Southfield rather than just checking off the boxes. So they did a really good job of that. I want to announce our town clerk's retirement. I mean, in the beginning of December, Kathy Doody will be retiring, so we will await the DTC's recommendation nomination for her replacement. I want to thank her for her time. Reminder, we'll be doing Halloween trick or treating. This year it will not be a town hall because we have early voting and so we can't have people, kids running around everywhere. You know, it is what it is. So yes, it will not be at my house, but it will be at the library. It will be participating. This community services building will be participating and we are working on local businesses within the middle of town to participate. So it'll be bigger, just less, not a town hall. And I've come to a tentative agreement with the fire union, so that just, we've settled that last week. So that's completely, you guys will send the information once we get the red line contract complete and signed. Anyone else have anything to share?
I, for the meeting next week, we're going to look at like the communications. Can we get anything ahead of time?
Yeah, you'll, you'll receive, well, you receive the memo, but it's really just a presentation by the consultants of what the work is, of how, you know, what the radio project is. So then you're going to get a live presentation at that point.
And at your suggestion, I, I met with the new library director today, lovely lady. I, I'd recommend everybody going to say hello. She seems to be on top of things at this point.
Yeah, we do. Well, I want, I guess we should thank your wife for steadying the ship while we didn't have a library director. You're welcome, Mel. We'll give her back. Anyone else? All right, well then, I will, item fourteen is the executive session, general update with town attorney on all pending litigation.
So we go into executive session for a general update and invite the town attorney and we'll be discussing all pending litigation?
All right, the motion has been made. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed?
Are we going upstairs?
Hearing none, the motion carries. Yeah, we go upstairs.
Let Jerry log off.
Yeah, we'll call.
Jerry, we'll give you a call.
That sounds good.
Thank you.
Recording stopped.
Hey, Lambert. How you doing? I like your sheet print. Pretty awesome. Mrs. Donnelly. She was the other guy. She was, she was quite. There you go. Apparently it's.
Why don't, why don't we go downstairs? We'll go downstairs.
I was just trying to, because they're talking.
There you go.
That's right. It's a meeting to everyone.
Go through this.
Progress.
All right, so we're coming out of executive session, eight thirty. And I'll undertake a motion to adjourn.
Can I, can I do it? Because Jerry's not here. Motion to adjourn, I make a motion to adjourn.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Thanks everyone.
I almost messed it up too, after all that.
What happens if we go two-two on it?
Recording stopped.
Yeah, that's okay. But there's nothing left on the adjournment. Things at that point.
Sit around.
Good night all. We'll have a coffee tomorrow. And in the way of the meetings, I have something for the week.